It is eight o'clock. Let's stand and do the play. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in this world with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public discussion.
Hi, my name is Dennis Higgins. I'm a lifelong constituent of Cassoot County. I also worked for the county road department for thirty-two and a half years. Retired now from that. I just come to light on the actions that have happened here in the past between Supervisor Roger and Supervisor Kyle. And some of the constituents of Cassoot County and the district have come to me and asked me if I would come to the board and speak on behalf of them for Roger to resign as chairman of the board and supervisor of District Five. And I've worked in the public sector all my life and everything is zero tolerance, whether it's school, whether it's Winnebago, Keeferville, whatever. You do something like what happened there, it's snap-on, immediate dismissal. There's no question to ask, whatever. I'm just speaking for the constituents in District One and some of the other districts. I guess my case is unacceptable and shouldn't have been.
Public discussion? Seeing none.
Could I say something to the public?
Sure.
Okay. Are you guys in a hurry at all?
No.
Okay, so if I could have a minute. Just in being an elected official and being on the board, I think all of us here on this board would confess to be a Christian and knowing that faith is important. In 2 Corinthians 5, we read in the scriptures that the church has given the ministry of reconciliation and that is forgiveness towards one another. And I think there's a lot of bitterness, there's a lot of resentment on this board, even with members of the public at times, but I'm talking about our board. And that has obviously gone for a long time, it didn't take me long to figure that out. And in Ephesians, Apostle Paul talks about that Christ loves the church, and that's us, so much that he gave himself up for her, cleansed her, and considers her spotless and without blemish. And that is what he has called us to do, to view each other. And that's very hard to do. And that, when I look out and speak to somebody in the public, I have a note card that says, "Let no one despise me for your youth, but set the believers an example in speech, in conduct, in love, in faith, and in purity." And I see that every time I go to speak to somebody, and it reminds me of how I need to act and what Jesus has done for me, therefore what I should do for them. And the same goes for the older folks, too. But what needs to happen is we need to let go of some of that bitterness and some of that resentment and forgive one another, regardless of what happens today or any other week. But I want, and I'm, as an example, as I just read, as an example, I'm going to say that Tammy and Roger and Kyle and Josh and Jack, that I would ask that you would forgive me for any words or actions that I have done that are unkind, disrespectful, inappropriate, whatever it would be. And I want you to know that I forgive each one and everyone of you, too. And I would encourage you all to do the same. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Any other public discussion? Secondary road foreman?
Yes.
Yep. Anything to interrupt?
Just trying to get as much time before the roll call flies as we can.
All ready?
Are we all ready? I thought you said the wheels. That doesn't take long to put on anymore, it's pretty nice, and it's all detached and everything, so. Got a test round a couple weeks ago, we did tomorrow, so everything worked good there, so we didn't have any issues, so it was good.
Anything for the road foreman?
Find that rock. Okay, Mike.
Yeah, we're gonna take some bets out, I'm with Mike Danner, just tomorrow, we'll pick that out.
Okay.
If not, do you want to go to the agenda next? You have a motion to approve the agenda in minutes dated October 31st. Who made that?
Me.
Matt? Second?
I'll second.
Whacter? Any discussion on the agenda or the minutes?
Yes, I'd like to have the one item removed, I cannot prove that because I've not been made aware that that's even a legal item. And. Something that said there may have been illegal meetings taking place between three board members. Did that put on that? They made previous decisions about who would be, who they would select, and that if that happened, then they were definitely out of order for having illegal meetings, for having discussions of the such without the publics being notified by that. And I, as far as I'm concerned, that takes place on January 3rd, it's always been that way, nineteen years being on the board. And so unless an attorney tells me that's illegal option, I cannot handle that. This goes further into Carter's trying to say that there's animosity, always doing so more animosity in the board, like putting such idiotic things on the agenda. We're a few weeks away from January 3rd, and that should be taken up that day.
Any more discussion?
I'd like to say I did talk to attorneys and legislators in the state office, and that was what I was advised.
I have not been to the aware of that, so I cannot.
And I did not have a meeting. I'm gosh about it.
The same. I've heard rumors that three people, maybe all their names, have discussed and decided who they want to be chairman.
People can say what they want, but I've not had a meeting with them.
I would say there was a lot of rumors prior to my time on the board and during my first term, and I didn't share them in a board meeting.
Well, again, I've not been told by an attorney that that's even a thing that can be done. I've seen some information tampering with the Roberts Rules of Order to the extent that that's not, I think something can be done, so.
Where would that be?
Or Tammy.
It said that if it's an elected official in a government body, it may not be able to be permanently removed as chair. Didn't say it couldn't, it did say may not.
Well, but we don't have a permanent chairman.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not how our elected body works.
Well, it didn't say perma-, well, it said, yeah, it said permanently, it didn't say permanent chairman, but yeah.
Well, in any case, I'm not going to handle that can-do activity. That's just the kind of stuff that makes this board look like a bunch of monkeys up here, and I'm not going to handle it.
Any more discussions? We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Pla.
What are we voting on?
The agenda.
Agenda.
To approve the agenda.
To approve the agenda.
Jack cannot make a motion on anything. Oh, okay.
Oh, Pla?
No.
Matt?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Jerks?
No. We are up to Cassoot Regional Monthly Update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're having a run through our financials.
Hi. So, looking at the first quarter of our fiscal year that began in July, we are right on budget for our net patient revenue. Pretty consistent volumes on our third floor and our ED. And our outpatient services continue to be much busier than what we expected. Really, that comes from a lot of our radioology services, with the biggest one of that being in our MRIs, we've been really busy there. And then in our outpatient fusions continue to grow, too. Our new service line that we began in July called Senior Life, which is our outpatient intensive group counseling, that continues to be full. We can bring on ten folks and we did that in the first month, and we've been getting a lot of great feedback on that. Our durable medical equipment store continues to be private pay. We plan to have joint commission within the next month, and then hopefully from there we can start to build insurance, so hoping around the first of the year, we can start that. So, we had a 17% positive operating margin for the first three months of the year. We do have a lot of open positions right now, Stephanie can touch on our third floor, that's where our biggest gap is right now, but we do have two X-ray tech jobs open as well, so if you know any X-ray techs, please, please, please send them our way, so. A couple things going into the first of the calendar year, we were able to not raise our health insurance pre-pre-premium spur staff, which is a really big deal. Last year, we had to raise them about 16% to be, because that's where our rates were at, so that was great news. And then we do market adjustments in January as well for staff, and seeing where they're all ready at now, it's probably going to be some pretty significant movement again. We just have to continue to pay well to retain the sound that we have, so. Any questions?
So, we have a few things to celebrate. Our community health staff, our home care staff, received an award from Healthcare First, and that's a patient satisfaction award. We were one of two home care agencies in the state of Iowa to receive that award, so it's a really big deal. And so we'll be finding a way to celebrate that with our staff. This is as we celebrate Home Care and Hospice Month, this is a good time for that to come through, make a celebration for our team. Also, we just recently had our legacy baller, we honored Jim Yellen. Jim was our legacy award winner this year, and that's a significant, significant contribution that he's made over the years. He has served three different periods of time on our hospital board of trustees, and also was instrumental in getting our foundation up and running and the building of the Oklahoma Medical Clinic back years ago, and physician recruitment, and just so many things that he's brought to this community, so certainly we're a better place because of him, and that's Jim Yellen, and we're most very proud of him. Anything that he would ask? I mean, we also were notified that we, second year in a row, won the Women's Choice Awards for top ER care as well as top ODI care, and we're in the top 3% in the nation in both those, so. And that's related to quality outcomes in both those areas, so.
Nice.
What questions do you have?
No questions? Got them all pretty good today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are up to decision to appoint chairman and vice chairman for the Board of Supervisors. Carter? You put it on the agenda, made the discussion?
I did. I, as I just stated after visiting legislators and ISAC and attorneys, and I don't think we need to discuss further what happened, people are aware of that, but just an appropriate thing to do at this time.
Matt?
Can I make a statement?
Yes.
So, you've all sat here and listened to what Carter said this morning, and I think if you think about that, the situation you're talking at hand is fourteen, fifteen weeks behind you, and you've been conducting business through that whole time with no interruption. You've got six meetings left till the end of the year, or to your January 2nd meeting, when you'd appoint new chair, co-chair, however you want to handle it. I don't think there's any reason to proceed with the item on the agenda, I think you guys need to get to work, do your job for the benefit and interest of people in the county, and not waste time on this topic.
Thank you, Matt, I agree with you, full argument, yeah.
I think what's been lost is us. You know, I sit next to Nancy here, her retirement years, the last few years, haven't been very good, how could they be, not knowing that she'll live in a place that will save an obsolete pipeline when it's done, being shut down our throat. And I'm just disappointed that we're just spending time on this now, and we're wasting time, we don't have time. Let's just finish the year out, I think Jack's right, let's just go forward. One word I, and I appreciate it from Carter, I don't hear nothing in this room, is just forgiveness and let's move on.
Thank you, I agree with you again.
I guess I would say, we also heard other comments this morning, and I have been contacted by a lot of people inside my district and outside my district, and the very large majority has said that this should not go unnoticed, it should not be left like it's not a big deal. There has been comparisons made to other levels of politics, whether it be state or federal government, where action would have been taken prior to the trial even happening. You could look at federal government, for example, if an accusation's made, there is action taken, usually very swiftly. And I think we have to look at how our county is represented for the benefit of the people, and I don't think that's something that should go unnoticed.
I agree with you. Well, and when I talk about forgiveness, that was not a political statement or anything to justify a certain action of the board. I, that just, that was a general statement, but, so let's, yes, we need to have forgiveness, but we need to also look at our, I mean, it's just, I don't know, we need to talk more here about things than what has already been talked about in the courtroom, so.
As chairman, I'm just going to ask for a motion to appoint somebody or to dismiss the agenda item. We're just talking too much about past, so let's get on and get the business done of the county.
And we need to separate happenings in the courtroom from going forward, too.
So, let's go back and do what's good for Cassoot County, and I would entertain a motion either way from anybody.
I move that we dismiss this from the agenda and go on, take it up on January 3rd.
Motion by Pla. Do I have a second? I'll second his motion so that we get on with the meeting. Do a roll call vote, please.
Pla?
Yes.
Matt?
No.
Whacter?
No.
I'm sorry, did you answer?
No.
Okay, sorry. Stacker?
No.
Jerks?
Yes. Entertain another motion, motion failed.
I move to dismiss for lack of another motion.
I guess I would make a motion to appoint myself as chairman, and the reason being our conversation at the beginning of this year, that Chair, Vice Chair would move to Chair, and we wouldn't rotate.
All right, they have a motion on the floor, Mr. Stacker is the chairman.
I'll second.
Whacter? Any discussion on the motion?
I think that the conversation that is being referred to at the beginning of the year is when, and it's on video, go back and watch it, but when the year would be up come January, that was the whole intention originally of putting Kyle into a vice chairman position so that he could be, get some practice running a meeting, I mean, the two of you are not going to be here forever, obviously, but, and that he would move into that role following year, and that someone else would then take over the following year after that, and we have somewhat of a rotation that was discussed at that time in the boardroom, we have not discussed that since, but that was what was discussed at that time, is what is being referred to. I guess I won't say more.
Any other discussion? If not, do a roll call vote, please.
Pla?
I'm gonna have a standing for both present, I'm not voting on Mr. Whacter, I consider it to be a legal, I have not heard, going against the Roberts Rules of Order, I have not heard a attorney tell me that we can do this, so I'm not voting to vote on pass or present, however you want to put it out.
Matt?
I'm gonna pass as well.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Jerks?
I'll pass, and let the other ones vote.
Matt? He's abstaining.
Always abstaining. I have a question of the person who made the motion. Upon taking the chairman position, Kyle, are you going to treat everyone fairly and respectfully and equally?
Yes.
In this boardroom? And are you going to, to let personal affairs govern any decisions that you make, even between other board members, as far as are you going to treat them the same, too?
Will I let those personal issues?
Personal issues?
No.
Dictate how you decide things and how you conduct the meetings?
There are a number of issues that have happened over the years that I.
I disagree.
I, no.
And I guess in the event that you do have personal things coming to this boardroom, that you would direct a vice chairman, whoever that would be, to mediate that in that time?
No.
So, I'm just gonna say that, how Mr. Stacker can say such a thing when he's had such animosity with people in his own district, primarily on drainage tissues, and brings a lot of personal vendettas into this boardroom, and I don't see how we can honestly sit there and say that, so.
Are you willing to change that?
I don't think that a specific contractor is a choice of personal animosity.
We're getting into something else, I was just asking questions, yeah, but I just want to know that. If I have your word, then yes.
Jerks?
No. Motion carried three to two?
Three to.
So, Jack did not vote.
Jack did not vote. Do you want me to call for the vice chairman, or you want to?
It's the same agenda item, so it doesn't matter.
He's the new chairman, so I didn't run the meeting. He's the new chairman, so he's running the, running the meeting.
I got an agenda here, um, with the decision at Chair, I would entertain any motion for a Vice Chair.
I would nominate Carter, Matt for Vice Chair.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Roger. Have a motion, a second on the floor, is there any further discussion? Uh, roll call vote, please, Tim?
Pla.
Whoever you want to present or abstain, I'm not gonna vote on it, I consider this to be illegal.
Nah. Nah.
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Jerks?
I will abstain. Motion carries three to zero. Two abstains. Okay. Um, are you guys comfortable moving seats later, if you want to now?
We got a lot of people out there.
Okay, let's, let's handle business. Next item up on our agenda is to acknowledge the transfers made by the Cassoots County Auditor, has everyone reviewed them in your packet? Are there any questions? If not, please let the record reflect to acknowledge the transfers made by the auditor. The next item up is approving a handwritten claim for a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the, uh, Watsonashaw County Sheriff. Um, what, I would entertain a motion to approve that claim.
Some of them.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, is there any discussion on the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 I ask for a roll call, because again, please.
Tammy, could you do a roll call vote?
Pla.
Once again, I abstain, because, uh, if you don't, I think this is, uh, until I'm told that this was legally pursued today, I'm going to abstain.
I talked about one.
Nobody's told me that regardless.
Do you wanna call that one up then, so we can continue the meeting?
Hey Todd, would you be able to come up to the boardroom? Um, Jack has a question in regards to whether the Chair and Vice Chair was legally on the agenda, and he said he has not heard that from you, so he does not want to vote in anything for the rest of the meeting. Okay, thank you. He said he would be up. Jack, would you like us to continue with the vote, since we have that on the floor for this one?
I abstain.
Or wait till Todd comes up?
Chair, I abstain.
Okay, well, we have a vote on the floor, Jack is abstaining, so please continue.
Nah.
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Jerks?
I'll abstain with Jack.
Motion carries three to two, or three to zero. Two abstains. For the next one, we will wait for Todd to come up.
Is it okay if I keep the order of the votes this way till the next meeting, so we don't mess up?
It makes it easier for you to go here.
Yeah.
You can move these up or you can down.
Yeah, I'll just see if one's kind of key. Phil, would you like to come up and just give some discussion on your next two items while we are waiting? And then we can proceed when Todd comes up, or?
Uh, first item I have on the agenda is, uh, approval of hired full-time critical care paramedic, rate of twenty-six dollars per hour. Um, we did follow county hiring practices, advertising and, and interviewing. Uh, it was conducted with myself and with Donna Nielsen, uh, HR, so, uh, we did fulfill all those, those items, and, um, we have made an offer, and was accepted the offer, so I see you guys' approval on, on that hiring. Uh, the second item is, um, we are, we're gonna be holding an EMT class right here in Cassoots County, um, it's gonna be held at the, at the.
Thanks for coming up, Todd.
Yep.
Jack, would you like to ask a question, or would you like me to say it?
Well, I just, I, I do not think that this is proper, or in, in order with Robert's Rules of Order. Uh, we typically, we always pick the Chairman, Vice Chairman on January third, and this was put on the agenda by, uh, Carter, and I, I just, I'm not going, I just think it's not proper to follow Robert's Rules of Order, doing this, uh, with just a few weeks left to January third. There was no reason to remove, even though they wanna talk about a court case, that was, that, that was, there's nothing in that court case that, uh, that, uh, that says that someone should be removed, or is a removable offense, and, uh, so, I just, I'm not, I cannot continue voting on items, uh, unless I am told that this was, uh, completely following the rules of, of Robert's Rules of Order, or if it's even legal.
Well, the, uh, first of all, I don't think Robert's Rules of Order apply, um, you know, it's, that's a procedural issue.
Those are what we follow.
Right, and so, the question then would come down to, uh, whether removal is necessary, um, or even, uh, proper, as, as far as what your procedures for your election and satisfaction of the term, uh, of the office of Chairman, or Chairperson. I don't know what those are. Do you have written policies for Chairman and Vice Chairman, and how that?
That is, we follow Robert's Rules of Order, and it, and it's always, till nineteen years on the board, it's always handled with, we close out old business, and we start new business, and that's why we do Chairman and Vice Chairman, I'm like, we've never been anchored.
And so you're,
Got to be some reason, you know, to, to.
And I think that's your, your, your position as far as the vote, and your, you know, your, your basis for the vote, you know what your discussion on the topic would be, um, whether or not it follows Robert's Rules of Order in regards to, you know, satisfying the term of, uh, of a Chairperson, I don't even know if that's, quite frankly, I don't even know if that's in.
There's gotta be something in there about the removal of the Chairman.
Well, there's a, you know, the only thing that I'm familiar with in regards to, um, you know, removal from office is what's in the code by, um, I don't know, does anybody have a Robert's Rules of Order handy? Yeah.
There's not.
All you do, so is it in there?
Not really.
I mean, that.
It's vague.
As far as what?
As far as Chairman's responsibility, it's very vague. I'm sure he conducts the meeting, but it doesn't have anything about removing the Chairman.
So it's not in Robert's Rules of Order, so it really wasn't?
Not specifically, it says he serves the term, but it doesn't say how, if he can be removed or not, so.
Well, I mean, we're gonna do this kind of, we're gonna do this kind of crap, you know, with a few weeks left, and, it's, we did, it just makes this whole board look like a kangaroo board again, you know, just make, it's our perception of the public is, it's dysfunctional, we can't get our work done, we got a handful of people changing the rules constantly, making up their own rules and not following the normal rule of business, and, I, I, I can't condone that, I just can't condone it.
And, and that's the support of your vote. Whether or not it's something that can go in front of the board for a vote, I don't think is, is, uh, something that, that falls under Robert's Rules of Order. It, it falls under, you know, what your discussion topic would be for your vote, for your vote, um.
Well, let's put this on the agenda every week, let's hold on to the Chairman, Vice Chairman every week, that's the way it's gotta be.
Well, I mean, it, the, the, the key is, is that we're here at the end of the, the year, I mean, the reality is that January one, it'll be changing of the guard, I assume. So I don't, I mean, any business is capable of being presented on an agenda and discussed.
Well, and I'm going by what I'm hearing in the public, you know, we had two people in there this morning saying that this shouldn't, shouldn't have took place, and should have waited till January third, I've had other people around the community say, you know, what's going on here, this, you know, you don't need to do this, wait till January third.
Right.
There's no reason to, to do something, you know, this kind of idiotic stuff, it just creates animosity.
Right.
Todd, for, we have already acted on that agenda item, the reason I called you is because we were, voting on,
On what agenda?
On Chair and Vice Chair.
Sure.
Um, we were doing handwritten claims and trying to move through the rest of our agenda, and Jack thinks the whole agenda is illegal because of the change of Chair and Vice Chair.
On what grounds? I mean, it was notice published, and within twenty, or greater than twenty-four hours, I mean, the agenda's legal. What, what happens with the Chair and the Vice Chair, I don't disagree with you as far as, you know, the, uh, the way it appears to the public, um, but the fact of the matter is, depending on what you voted and what the vote was, and how that resulted, or what the results were of that vote, doesn't affect the rest of the agenda.
Still not hearing, we follow Robert's Rules of Order, and I'm still not hearing you say that this, that this is a proper,
And I don't understand your analogy to Robert's Rules of Order, I mean, Robert's Rules of Order provides guidance for the five of you as to how to conduct a meeting. It has nothing to do with who's gonna be Chair, who's gonna be Vice Chair, who, what happens during the course of the term, if the, the, you know, if there's a, a require, or if there's something that comes up that, that, you know, vote of confidence, if you wanna call it that, um, you know, they, they, and by the way, an example, they removed the, you know, the, the Speaker of the House. For, you know, clearly, whatever the reasons were for that, I mean, it's not a situation where Robert's Rules of Order is going to dictate whether you can or can't do something, it's how you're going to conduct yourselves in your business meetings, to get to the results that the majority want to have accomplished, I, I, I don't understand, what do you want me to say, Robert's Rules of Order doesn't apply? Is, is that what you want me to say? I don't really know, because I'm not a, you know, scholar on Robert's Rules of Order, but I don't believe, according to what I'm hearing, that Robert's Rules of Order has anything to do with removal of, of the, uh, uh, the officers, whoever they may be, and whatever organization they are.
Ted, where did you?
What I can say is if the, if the agenda was presented.
It wasn't from Robert Rules of Order, it was about it, but it wasn't from it.
Excuse me?
Oh, sorry, um, Jack asked me if I read something I read earlier from Robert's Rules of Order, so, and I said, no, it was about Robert's Rules of Order, but it wasn't from Robert's Rules of Order.
I didn't hear what you read.
Um, it said something about if a government, if it's a governmental board, and the Chairman is elected, he may not be able to be removed permanently, um, but that, and it said may, but that was some, another article, it wasn't from Robert's Rules, it was about Robert's Rules of Order.
And where was, what was the, the source from that, as far as the?
It was called, it was Removing the Chair During a Meeting, and from Jurassic Parliament.
From what?
Jurassic Parliament.
I've never heard of that.
Well.
I, yeah, I, I think we've beaten this topic enough, I guess. Are you satisfied with your answer, Jack, or do you have anything more specific to ask?
Uh, no, I just think this is, uh, this is, uh, something shouldn't, shouldn't have happened until January third, I'm gonna stand by that, but,
Okay.
This is, this should be, there's, there was no reason to do it, we heard from two people in the public today that said it shouldn't happen.
Okay, well, if that's your opinion, I guess we can continue on from there. Thanks for coming up, Todd. Phil, uh, back to hiring.
You had something on there before me?
No, we already did the handwritten claim. So you are up, um, did you have anything further you wanted to touch on for the new hire, or name?
I don't know if you guys have any questions.
Do you have a name, or?
Yeah, so, um, it's Justin Tickle.
Okay.
Um, higher employee, he went to air fight, um, just continued to work part-time for us, uh, ever since then, and has decided to come back.
Okay.
For less full-time, so.
Sounds good, um, I would entertain a motion to approve hiring Justin Tickle, full-time critical care paramedic at three twenty-six dollars an hour.
Some of them.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion, a second on the floor, is there any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Pla.
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, um, next is, uh, loan agreement for new volunteers, you were discussing that.
Well, I started to say, we, uh, we are having a class here in Algonquin, uh, it's gonna be starting here shortly. We were hoping to get started in October, um, with logistics and getting everything set up here, um, it didn't happen in October, but we're, we're close to getting started. The class will happen, uh, we had to have so many students for the class to happen here, uh, we do have enough students, um, from around the counties, not just from Algonquin, they're from around the county. I believe we have like four from. I believe we have like four from Sweet City, one from Bancroft, one from Tike, one from Benton, uh, one or two from Algonah, so it's a good cross mix around the county. The ones that are applying as, um, through the county, um. Some of them, so all of the people that they applied for the gap funding, which is a program through the college where they can get their tuition paid for. Uh, the ones that did not receive the grant funding, uh, we have the loan program, um, something that we've had in place prior to. July first of Cassuth County, it's just a transition of a new agreement written as Cassuth County versus written as, um, communities of Algonah, Sweet City. So we basically ensure what the agreement states is that we pay for the class. Uh, and they signed an agreement to, uh, provide at least two years of, of employment within Cassuth County as some function for EMS. Uh, if, if they, if they do not complete the class or if they leave prior to that two years, uh, they, they're required to pay the money back. And if they, and if they leave within the two years. Based on the months of services that they did provide, uh, so they don't have to pay the full amount back, but. It's, it's an incentive to, to make sure they complete the class, that we're gonna pay for it and, and, and complete the class and pass the college portion of the class. And take the, and take the national test, uh, it's about two thousand dollars to send the person through, through the training. This class should conclude sometime in March, um, or the, or the very first part of April. So we're gonna try to get it done here quick before, um, film work begins in the spring and, and get these people through the class, so. Like I said, we're gonna be teaching that here in Algonah, um, at that training complex, the old UBC building, so this class will be held there two nights a week and, um. I guess I'm just asking for approval, if you guys had a chance to read this loan agreement, if people had questions on the loan agreement.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I did, I did send this to Todd, Todd did review this loan agreement, um, so he did change a couple of things from what I had, a couple of minor things, uh, so that was. Was changed prior to you guys receiving the copy of this.
Okay, thanks Phil, Kami?
Um, usually the county doesn't do loan agreements with employees. Um, I did check with Elizabeth on it, she says it's not something she's aware of, doesn't mean it's never happened anywhere. But I know like the sheriff's office has an agreement when they send somebody to, um, to the academy.
Contracts, so it's.
Yeah, so maybe if we could change the wording so that it's not a loan agreement and more if it's. An agreement like what the sheriff's office has, because this looks like we're loaning and employing money and.
More of a contract for service.
Yeah, more something like what Roger uses with his, um.
Did she say there was any issues with it per se or just wasn't sure?
Hold on. I can read you her email. So. She said, I have not heard of employees taking out a loan with the county before, not to say that it hasn't happened, I have just not encountered it. I have seen employees reimbursed for those type of expenses after successful completion of programs and other requirements are met. Or the county pays for the training with an agreement in place of the employee will remain in that position for a specified amount of time. Either way, please consult with your county attorney, there would need to be policies and procedures put in place to govern these activities.
And you've already consulted with Todd, he made some changes, you said, Phil?
Yeah, but I didn't discuss the wording of loan, I mean, that was his first time I've heard that.
Okay.
And I agree, loan probably isn't the best choice of wording for that, uh, I would have an issue with changing it to.
Well, let some of it in there, you know, talks about borrower, we wanna try to probably avoid some of that language. And maybe look at what Roger maybe has, so that we're not.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be similar concept, because Roger, for yours, if they do not stay with the county, they have to repay back that prorated portion, generally, right?
Correct, ours is called an employment agreement. And what it states is that after we send them to the academy for certification, the county invests anywhere from. Twenty to thirty thousand dollars to get them certified. Well, once they're certified, they can be employed in Miami agency in state of Iowa. So rather than the county investing that money and then the next day they go to a different employment. They're required to pay back and prorated over a three-year period. Most recent example would be Deputy Will Summers left deployment here a couple of years ago, he still had about a year left on his employment agreement. So he ended up paying the county back about nine thousand dollars. And it was through that contract, he understood, knew when he signed it, that if he left within that three-year period. There would be a amount of money he would have to pay back the county for his certification.
Well, um, with all that being discussed, I would entertain a motion to either approve or table. I think it'd be good to maybe look into some of that stuff and tweak it, make sure she's good.
I'd, I'd make a motion to table the item. Look into language changes, what needs to, so we're all kosher with everything.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, um, we have a motion, a second on the floor, is there any further discussion?
So do you want it back on the agenda or just to change it to match up with Roger's or?
We'll have to have it back on the agenda to approve, um, let's coordinate with Roger and Todd and get some of those things. And Elizabeth and Tammy.
This needs to be done right away, I mean, as far as, in the next week.
I've got bills from the college to, to get this paid for, but, um, well, can we, can we get it figured out in the coming week?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we could, if we could have it on, okay, would you like to include it, that date in your next, in your motion?
Yeah, why not? To have it on. For next week's agenda. Yep.
Okay. Josh, are you acceptable to that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Thank you, Phil.
Yep.
Anything else for us?
Nope, not today.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Our next item is approval of climate control system at the sheriff's office in pound storage building. Is there anything you'd like to say on that, Roger?
No, just that we have completed our move, um, some of you may not be aware, but we were utilizing the old state shed. Down on South Philip Street that the county engineer is in charge of, um, we've been using, utilizing that for several years. And with the acquisition of the old UBC property on the east side rail tracks. On South Lantry, that is now our impound evidence storage. Examples I can give you is, in the sheriff's office, we have evidence storage, but anything bigger than a doorway will not fit in there. So we utilize this for when we seize evidence larger than what we can put inside the sheriff's office, mainly motor vehicles. Right now, we have three vehicles in seizure, uh, waiting for forfeiture, we have, uh, items that are too large to bring inside of the building. So part of that utilization of improving that property is we do have a storage. Uh, building that really have skillfully remodeled into a impound area, a storage area. And we do have heat supply in that building, but we wanna be able to maintain it at a lower level because. No person will be in that building every day. So we wanna be able to control that climate so that they can monitor it and make sure that. All of a sudden isn't seventy-five degrees in there when it really only needs to be forty-five degrees. Um, it's basically a cold storage area that we could turn up the heat if we have to do a surge ward. Or utilize some type of, uh, uh, evidence that needs to be stored. Uh, I'll give you another example, we have a homicide trial in the code a couple of years back. And all of that evidence has to be stored, uh, we've got it inside the storage building and we have to maintain that evidence. Through the appeal process, which could be up to ten years. So we do need to have a facility where we can maintain that evidence, it needs to be secured, we've got that, we've secured it with fencing, the building is secured. We do have a heat supply if we need it, we just wanna be able to control it. And I think it's makes sense to invest two thousand, two hundred dollars to be able to monitor that. When I, as a sheriff, can tell you that I won't be down there every day, I might only check on it weekly or monthly. This way, the, our maintenance staff can check on it hourly or daily if they need to.
Not so much hour or daily, but we'll get alerts.
Yes, they get alerted when there's a problem.
Okay, thank you, any questions from the board, otherwise I'd entertain a motion for this topic.
Then make the motion to.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Roger, thank you, um, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. The next item on our agenda is the same system for North Philip Street. Any comments, questions?
Same thing, just so we get alert.
Yeah.
Cause somebody's not in that building every day either.
This one is for five thousand.
Yep, I would entertain a motion to approve. I would make a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second on the floor, is there any discussion?
Why is this one, or more expensive than the?
Bigger building, more units. All that's in the sheriff's office is one tube here.
Yep.
This has air conditioning and heat.
Yep.
Okay.
You, you get two controls and one for each?
Yeah, that, it, it's one control, it'll be two new thermostats.
Okay.
And they just repeat back to the control and then it repeats back to us.
Okay. Any further discussion, otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next up is the cost allocation plan. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Phil.
Tammy, did you have anything you wanted to say on that?
Yeah, this is something that we do every year. And so this is, is nothing, um, new. It's just a, a yearly thing.
Yep. Any questions from the board, is any, pack it, so. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve. Or acknowledge, should say.
We need the motion to acknowledge?
Yeah.
That we do, okay, well, I'll make a motion if not, obviously. Cost allocation plan.
And for the chairman.
And authorize the chairman to sign this through the allocation form. Yep.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Hey Doug, we are ready for you in the boardroom, thank you.
Morning, you're good?
Morning, Doug. We are up to construction right away, did you have anything?
Uh, there is no, uh, construction in the road right away. Uh, we still have the, uh, we're waiting for some documentation from, uh. Matt Purpleday on a tile crossing, I believe we spoke about that a week and a half ago. But that hasn't happened and we have not received all the information, when we do, if it would happen to be this afternoon, we'll go ahead and give you the verbal.
Okay. Discussion of Cassuth County Engineer zoning investor?
Yeah, um, I wrote a letter to the board, November ninth, gave it to you, I hope everyone's had an opportunity to review it. Uh, I just wanted to go over that and make sure everyone understands what's going on at the board. We, Cassuth County, all counties in the state of Iowa are required to have, meet a minimum local effort. For, uh, road use. And what that minimal effort is, is seventy-five percent of the maximum property taxes. That are allowed to be levied for secondary roads. That figure, seventy-five percent, the local effort that I calculated is two point nine, or excuse me. Three million, one hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars and, uh, forty-four cents. What is budgeted and what can be contributed to local effort is two million, nine hundred seventy-seven thousand, thirty-one dollars. That's using those figures, we're short one hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. This is the code of Iowa that spells this out. The consequences for not meeting the local effort would be that the treasurer of the state of Iowa would reduce. The road use tax that is, the road use tax that is due to Cassuth County. Reduce the same dollar amount that Cassuth County would not meet. So what we're looking at over a two-year period, two fiscal years, we would have over two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. That the secondary road department would not receive because of this action. I wanna emphasize fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget that was submitted by the Cassuth County engineer. Was amended by the board supervisors. Cassuth County engineer had the budget this Cassuth County engineer submitted met that requirement. The board chose to change that budget, okay? I want that clear, the board chose to change the budget. Now, I need to know what is gonna happen. If you guys don't wanna do anything, let me know. We have an urban renewal project, in order to have that urban renewal project constructed. And paid for, some of the dollars paid for out of this fiscal year, an internal loan would have to happen. And we'd have to let the project, I would say if that project isn't already let, there's no way we're gonna have a contractor ready to construct that. There is a possibility of purchasing equipment out of the rural services fund. If the board chooses to do that, please let me know, again. You order equipment today, whether it is gonna be here by July one, I cannot guarantee that. And if there's any other alternatives, please let me know. This is the board's responsibility. If money is not in the secondary road department budget, if revenue is not there. The citizens of Cassuth County are the people that are going to be hurt, because secondary roads will not be able to. Deliver services like they have in the past. So any direction the board can give me, I would appreciate. So any direction the board can give me, I would appreciate it.
If you're looking for direction from the board, I think it would be appropriate to have that as a specific agenda item rather than just under discussion.
When the board has direction, please put it on the agenda and let me know about it.
Okay. Are there any comments?
But can we, should we discuss that direction so that we can put it on the agenda? I mean, cause otherwise, this is what we're meeting, at what point in the meeting do we want to discuss that?
Well, do you have any suggestions or comments?
Well, I mean, it's certainly would be, just practically speaking, maybe the best option to look at purchasing new pieces of equipment, and that is a big need. Like you said, whether that comes in by July first of next year, I don't know, but nobody knows, but it makes sense. Thanks for laying that out, but yeah.
Well, this I think
Board's thought, yeah.
I think we had discussion of this in September and I wrote, maybe it was even August, I wrote a letter in September and I wrote another letter. So, I hope that the board remembers those conversations. I hope they remembered that letter, those letters. But we're getting to a point where if there is nothing planned, the consequences are gonna happen.
Well, um, would it be the opinion of the board to have this as a agenda item for next week so we can have conversations or have conversations with Doug outside the meeting or? What would the?
Does would the agenda item need to be specific to what the direction is though?
Yeah, I mean, that's
Can't just be a loose we're gonna decide something today, you know, I don't know.
We don't have to decide the agenda item today, right this minute, we can
That's why I'm saying, what, what, what are you guys' thoughts as far as? How to proceed?
I was opposed to you guys cutting his budget back because I knew, I knew that he was gonna lose money and so it should have never been done, but you guys went ahead and pursued cutting his budget that now he's gonna lose two hundred eighty, over two hundred thousand dollars.
And how would you like to proceed?
You guys decided that, I, I voted against it, against it. We should have never, we should have never done, I knew that he was gonna lose money, but you guys refused to. You were smarter than the engineer.
Um, the local, local effort provision was never mentioned prior to approval of the budget.
We, we did mention that the metrics wouldn't work if you cut the budget, but nobody listened.
I believe Doug's told us that many, many times over, there's, you have to have a certain percent of local effort.
Um, what is the status of the uh, Michelson Marsh Bridge right now, is there anything in the works?
We're bringing the title up to date, we have, uh, we have legal descriptions for all the land transfer. I believe Doug Crouch is busy a little bit with Todd so that once the title is up to date, then Todd, Todd can provide a title opinion.
Actually it is and it is, uh, being printed.
Thank you, okay, so, um, then we need to buy right away, then we need to let the project.
I guess, I know that's been in the works for a number of years now, I think that would be.
First thing you're gonna have to do is you're gonna have to get enough money to build the project, I think we have, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tammy, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in that capital projects fund. Um, project is gonna cost five hundred fifty, six hundred thousand dollars, so we gotta have the money to do it.
And you would recommend an internal loan for that?
Uh, that is how the urban renewal works for that construction, yes.
Yep.
I, I don't recommend that, that's, that's part of the code.
Well, yeah.
I mean, in order for it, in order for it to count towards local effort.
It has to be debt.
It, no, it doesn't have to be debt, it has to be some sort of cost that can be contributed to the secondary road fund. If it comes out of the secondary road fund, then yes, that's local effort, but that would be local property taxes coming to the road fund, we're talking about, yes, local property taxes could be increased or roads, local option sales tax could be transferred. There's gotta be a way that somehow effort can be contributed to the secondary roads. Now, you're talking to urban renewal fund, there's gotta be in order to, in order to take, in order, in order to use the urban renewal, there has to be some sort of a, a debt that's shelved. And then that money, the tax money coming back from the urban renewal areas, that comes back and pays that loan. Now, in the past, we have done internal loans, in fact, one time, one internal loan was made out of the, out of local option sales tax, it was supposed to go to secondary roads. Which took money away from the secondary roads and showed that it was local effort, now that, I will, I would, I would say that's not a good use of money that is directed to secondary roads. However, that's the way it was done. So if you, if you'd like to do that, that's something, but again, two, we got two bridges that are gonna be let next week, federal funded jobs. Um, whether they will actually be constructed and any money paid for in fiscal twenty-three, uh, they have a late, late start or they have a completion date, you know, of next October, whether the contractor has work to do or not, we'll see.
Roger, with this being in your district and the time we've worked on it to try and get it here, do you feel that's a priority to be moving on the Michelson Marsh project?
Well, TIF districts should comply with the original intent of the TIF district and the original intent was to have it done in a certain period of time.
Yep.
And we are at the end of that period of time. So if we're gonna do it.
Better move.
We better get it done.
I don't know if we're at the end of the period of time because the ten-year period on the urban renewal where money, half of the money was going to, uh, Gold Eagle, half of, a quarter of it was going to the city of Titanca and a quarter of it was coming to Cassuth County, that is ending, but that's a twenty-year TIF, so Cassuth County's gonna receive a hundred percent of that money for the following ten years and that might already be happening. That should be happening soon.
It was my understanding that you were supposed to do the projects and then there was more projects within that TIF district that you should do and use.
Well, we gotta have the money to do them.
I know.
Which you gotta take a loan for.
But that was the object of the TIF district was to do multiple projects.
Yep.
And we still are able to, but we're gonna have to get a loan. But that doesn't solve what we're talking about right now.
Right, right. I guess, I would, I would recommend we move forward on that and if we need to have it on the agenda next week for an internal loan.
Well, just a reminder, we already have seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in internal loans on the Buffalo Urban renewal right now.
With a hundred percent of the funding coming in next year, you said, or the following?
Twenty-five or twenty-six, I can't remember, I'll have to look.
And we have an estimated one point four, one point five total revenue estimated for that area, I believe is what it is. Over the twenty-year period.
Yeah, over the twenty years, yeah.
Well, I guess, even if we don't have a specific agenda item, I think it'd be good to have all their um, information handy and have a conversation about it next week. Anyone? And then we can move on from here. Any other thoughts? From the board?
With the new rules that they put out on Senate file, whatever it is about taxing, your budget was cut last year by five hundred thousand, does that mean that you can only have a three percent growth rate? And is that gonna limit what you can do next year with bridges?
I'm not a, I'm, I'm not an expert on that, but my next, I've been start, are we finished with the, um, discussion on the renewal, urban renewal area?
Well.
I'm, I'm doing budgeting right now, uh, and I'm looking at construction. Our current construction budget is two and a half million dollars. Through October, we've spent nine hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. We also have nine hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred forty dollars and sixty-seven cents that's under contract right now. So that remains in the construction budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, five hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents. A couple of weeks ago, we spoke about a bridge north of Sexton, it's on paved road. We've got piling issues underneath of that bridge that are causing us to do a couple of things. And at that time, we talked about replacing that, which is pretty much gonna take care of that five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, I would assume it's gonna be a five hundred fifty thousand, six hundred thousand dollar project. We are planning resurfacing. Uh, road use tax, farm and market fund, our farm and market money is not going as far as it used to. Construction mon, dollars, they're not going as far as they used to. We originally planned on paving A sixteen from the west county line to the, to US one sixty-nine. We had, uh, right to the east of Ledyard, a project at eight thirty-eight, which is another project up in that area, three mile stretch. Uh, we were planning pave, we're planning pave a, a portion of P forty and, uh, seems like there was one other, we have reduced the amount of resurfacing, reduced the thickness on the resurfacing, we usually go three inches, two, inch and a half uh, lays of uh, layers of pavement, reduced it to two inches to stretch it out. We have the possibility to use farm and market funds approximately one point six million dollars and that would be seven miles on A sixteen. From eight thirty east, that's a four mile stretch, that'd be, uh, Ledyard east to one sixty-nine, two inch overlay is seven hundred thousand dollars. From P forty, from eight twenty-one to, uh, north to A sixteen, uh, that's a two inch overlay, three miles, four hundred fifty thousand, so that's one point, uh, one point one five million. My question, is the board planning to budget the same amount of dollars of construction uh, for secondary roads in fiscal year twenty-four or uh, have you given any thought to that, because if you are not going to fund it like you are, this letting is in March and I don't want a program, I don't want to uh, let the project unless there's a commitment to fund it.
I don't, I don't think we've had any conversations about next year's budget yet, so how soon do you need an answer on, like today?
Uh, these will be, these plans will be going into the, uh, the, into the Department of Transportation final signed plans in December. Usually it's the first or second, second Tuesday of December, I'm not sure. But that's when the final plans will be going in, uh, the contract would be let in March.
Oh, do we need to start having budget workshops or?
Budget, we're, budget sheets have been emailed to me and I am working on this.
Yeah, but we can't do anything as far as tax dollars till valuation time and so we, that's what we're waiting for right now is for evaluations.
On September twelfth, I was given a directive to put up a playground ahead sign in front of a residence. We ordered the sign, signs were delivered, that sign was not included in the delivery. A playground ahead sign is supposed to warn motorists, and this is from the manual on uniform traffic patrol. It is supposed to warn motorists of a playground that is ahead. This application, as I have stated many times, is not appropriate for this location, however, I was directed. We do have a hill blocks view sign that is more appropriate for this situation. If the board feels, if the board, I, I guess I'll take any direction the board gives. The problem is it's gonna be froze here pretty soon. If you're gonna get a sign up, you need to get it up.
Can you get that sign installed and replace the, um, sign later, once the other one comes in? Just change, we have, use the same post?
I could do that, however, again, I want the board to understand. There are certain things that the board is responsible with secondary roads. One of them, making decisions on, engineering decisions on appropriate signs. I, I think there's a time where you have to take some consultation from the county engineer and use it. And if you turn a blind eye, blind eye on the county engineer, that may lead to problems in the future. Level B road hearing next week. Does the board need any information from me?
I do not, anyone else looking for any information?
Level C hearing next week, does the board need any information from me?
Have we got any comments, some other landowners on the level C with dates?
Not at this time. Not, I've had oral comments, verbal.
And Doug, will you do agenda requests verbal with those or do you want me?
I can do that. Is the board, would the board like to have a decision on the maintenance of that road also included next week? I would like the decision to be made. One way or another, it's been drawn out way too long.
Yep. Okay, let's do that after the public hearings.
Uh, the bridge project south of Titanca, uh, it is ready to be, uh, have guardrail put on it, guardrails to be installed Friday, November seventeenth. Uh, we still have two positions open up, mechanic shop and, uh, we are going to be making an offer on the report. Uh, we have a letting next week for two bridges, uh, bridge replacements, one is on the west line of thirty-three section, or section thirty-three of Buffalo Township, uh, P sixty-four, that's, it's a federally funded br- bridge replacement project and then we have another federally funded bridge replacement project on the west line of section twenty-eight of Cresco Township and that's in P thirty. Uh, I'm hoping next week to give a map and some information on snow remove, no snow removal roads that we have and have the board act on those that, uh, they are, no snow removal. Uh, any guidance for a solar ordinance? I, we talked about that a few weeks ago, I don't know if the board would like to pursue, uh, an ordinance, but that's something I'm waiting for direction on. And then next week, we have a hearing on hazardous liquid pipelines. Uh, is there any information that the board would like from me on that?
I have a couple things, I'll email.
I have a couple of things, I'll email a couple of things to you, but.
Okay, and.
Today, yeah.
Besides the public hearing, or do you want to have the first consideration of that reading next week as well?
What's the feelings of the board?
We have, we have until, um, because it's going to be six weeks of, um, uh, what do they call it? Six weeks till, I can't think of the name, till the I V hears the deliberation and all that. Um, and then it'll be another two to three weeks. I, I talked to Tim Whipple, I, I can't remember the terms he all used, but, um, so we're looking at February-ish, even into March before a decision will be made with the I V. So we do have some time, um, if we wanted to do the first reading the following week. But either way, I, I guess is, is okay.
Does anyone else have any thoughts? And you were looking for direction as far as whether we have consideration and an actual vote on it, correct Doug?
Well, Todd is here, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, local legislation, you have the ability to do that. One thing that has to be done is there has to be some notice, public notice. Notice was published in the Cassuth remind, or excuse me, the Cassuth County Advance, the Sway City Herald and the Bancroft Paper last week. The notice contained the complete ordinance. My understanding is there needs to be a public hearing, give the citizens of Cassuth County the opportunity to speak. Give anybody, any interested person, not just the citizens, any interested person, the opportunity to speak. Then the board makes consideration. There is a requirement of three considerations. However, I think that if one is published, if the complete ordinance is published, the board may waive a read.
A third.
Yeah, so that's my understanding. So yes, we hold a public hearing, then we, there has to be consideration of the readings by the board supervisors. And then it's, becomes effective upon publication.
Let's do it same day.
Yeah, I think it'd be, I'm good with that. Any objections to having consideration the same day as the reading? Let's plan on that then.
Okay. Uh, I do not have any other, um, any other discussion points.
Okay, thank you Doug. You welcome the board.
Uh, do you know when, when is the Hannah Black top there? When is that in the, is that not five years plan somewhere? Um, down the hundred, hundred thirtieth street from?
The gravel road to pave?
No, hundred thirtieth street from the Laverne Section Road to Highway seventeen. Um.
Uh, okay.
I just didn't, was that not five years plan somewhere? I had a land.
I, I believe it is, however, with, uh, I, I need, I need to look at.
Yep.
We, we, we will be juggling again with a bunch of projects.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you Doug. Um, can we take ten minute break for drainage and come back at nine forty-five?
We have, um.
Ten o'clock.
We better keep rolling.
And we have to join this one.
We'll have to get Martin.
I'll be smart.
Okay. Mark, I got a petition here. Do you want this now or later?
Have you given everybody else?
No, I just have one. Eric, do you want to take a petition for improvement here? Uh, you can look at it and then I'll pass it to the other direction. So you just have to appoint engineer, Charlie. Just the first step in the process for appointing an engineer. Jack, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, next thing up is to acknowledge a petition for improvement for drain four, lateral forty and lateral forty-two, and to appoint an engineer. Um, Jack, I got the petition here. Did you want to see it or we pass it down already here? But, um, I would make a motion to appoint Bolden and Mink as engineer for this improvement petition. Would there be a second to that motion?
This is based on the petition?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
I can.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Believe Charlie's here if anyone has any questions for him, but. Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next up is drainage repair requests. The first one listed is request number ninety. Um, I had asked to put this on because when I watched the video from the special meeting on Thursday, it, the conversation seemed like, um, Jack or Roger was going to handle this. The motion in the minutes was to have supervisor take care of it, so. Um, I guess I was looking for clarification on how that was going to be handled.
It's in your district, so I think you should handle it.
Okay. There's nothing else on that. I just wanted to confirm. Um, then number seventy-eight is the next one. Carter, did you have that one or have that put on the agenda?
Yes, I did. Uh, there was, there was some confusion over the board had discussed. Not last week, or we didn't meet last week, two weeks ago, um, whether that exploratory, uh, request was complete or not. Uh, we did discuss that, uh, after digging up the, um, the box on the west side of the road there and, um, the Kramer ground, um, there was nothing found there. And then, um, again, a box was dug up on Antones, a little further downstream. And there was no restriction found there. Um, so the board felt at the time, two weeks ago, that and discussed that that was acceptable and complete, um, for the completion of that re- particular repair request. Um, and so it's, it's on the agenda by request of, of landowners to, um, to have official board action as to whether this is complete or not. I was there for the, the digging up of the box on, on Kramer property, um, and the box was in great shape and, um, I may have pictures and things, but, but I was not there for digging on Antones. And there were supposed to be two supervisors present there too, but. So anyway, that's, that's why it's not here, is we need to decide, is this, is this repair request finished or not?
Is there any question?
Any questions for me or for landowners or?
Well, we have a video, we found a relief line that you guys were saying wasn't there, and it's been blocked. That's what we found when Kyle tried to stop the deal. And, uh, the only thing Kyle had tried to stop the whole investigation, once we got on the six. And I felt we had a real decent discussion when we allowed this investigation done. See what pipes we do and do not have.
No, actually Joe, when we had the initial conversation, I said that it should be televised to have documentation of all that. And you said that was a waste of taxpayer money.
Well, when you were, when they were putting up the sign to their property, we got, we heard of it. Televised, you know, we called Jack, he said, we are good looking at that way. And then you guys were always coming saying, you had a meeting to stop the law. I, I don't, I never saw it on the agenda or anything, from what I can.
Well, what I said was it, that would be a good idea to do it, but I felt you understood that you'd have to put a request in order for that to happen.
The way we understood the request, and Steve and, and, and further, is that once we figured which direction the restriction was from the greenwood box, we continued the investigation. And Rich Archer was there, Rick Bauer was there, Carter was there, Ken Koche was there, I was there. And they all had things to do. And we were told, well, let us know what you find. So it sounded to me like we could continue.
Well, what I told them was, go ahead and let just do it, you're there, but then to come in here and put a request in, we approve that request.
Okay, well, Steve's got some things to say here, um, as part of, uh, what we get funding and, uh, what we're here like to look at this one. We found a map, it was in, uh, the NRCS office, they did a, uh, in nineteen sixty-seven, they did a, uh, analysis of this and how they improve it. And in there, they had a map from the nineteen twenties. And they show, uh, the two relief lines, or the two lines coming out of the greenwood box, going across the road and joins up to a one thirty-six inch pipe. That's my, I shall see you, uh, which one. How that did one have for, that's from nineteen twenty.
Are you aware of any box down in Antones?
No.
I'm not either.
That's the question, do you, do you please make walk away?
Carter, when you were up there, didn't you say there was very low water? Picture shows less than two inches of water in there. You did not anticipate any, um, blockages downstream?
I'm not out there causing trouble, you know.
I'll show you the picture, my suggestion is this one thirty-six up to these two right there, you see there's two up and down. Down, but down. Problem is, you have two, there are two sitting.
Roger, have you seen?
Yeah, I got the.
This whole picture Carter, just of the box.
That's the top one.
Yeah, there's a hundred ninety, ninety-five percent open.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with it.
Also, I recall I was, the problem that located to there, do you think after the, also from nineteen twenty to this period? Well, it was a plan to do it at forty-eight, six, I, I don't math well, sixty-seven.
I, they might be right, there might be a restriction southeast of the box, but it's not affecting the box. Why wouldn't it affect the box if it was southeast of there?
If it's downstream, it should affect out to from there.
We just kind of want to find out what we've got. We found out that there was, they moved about three foot of fall in the Antones. Right away, they brought that tile and really the back of that thirty-six inch, uh, that gram itself out. And, uh, they gave up about three foot of fall, which would affect the unit.
Here's the map I got.
You have copies for the whole board?
No, could you make me a copy?
Where is that map from?
Uh, the NRCS. I think the landlord back in sixty-seven got together back in the sixties.
How you doing Roger? You look good. But I need glasses too though.
Well, that makes two of us.
Yeah.
Don't need batteries.
No batteries at this age anymore, does it?
No.
After today, I'm retired.
I'm just tired.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm out of the.
I'm gonna get the refund.
I'm out of the deal. Do you have a pin Kyle? I'm gonna draw on mine. I'll be drawing one of them.
I'll trade you.
I like the original back. But right here, here's the trouble right here. Here's outlet Antones. And here's the outlet. Here's a two pipe right here. See right here on your map?
Yeah.
Good, see your map there? See your map right here? Uh, this is, this is a ball pit. This is a ball pit in Antones. There's two thirty-two inch pipes coming ninety here, okay? You've got two thirty-twos dumped into a thirty-six. You're bottling them right there.
And you're saying, found that on televising?
Well, I looked on the map, you can tell.
No, I'm not asking about the map. I'm asking about televising.
Well, that's, that we just found out. So what, you'll see that on the map. All I, all my job was, was to, to, to come up with a solution to the problem. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
I, I.
I'm not in the legal part of anything. I was out there to look for the pet farmer, to give them a solution to the problem. Dragging me anymore into this is not acceptable. Do you understand?
You, I'm, you're totally correct.
Yeah, I mean?
Yep.
And here's what I got to say about that. And I've all got your attention. Cause I, this is a report, this is a report on the exploratory authorized by the Scute County Supervisor. I find it impossible to give any guidance or recommendation at this time. I will not give any recommendations based on exploratory dig that was not allowed to be completed. To expect me to do so based on an incomplete exploratory dig makes no sense. To expect me to do so based on an incomplete exploratory dig makes no sense. The taxpayers deserve better than this from our elected officials. Therefore, I will not give any recommendations at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, does the board feel that this needs to be explored any further? Jay, are you aware of any, are, are you aware of two tiles coming into?
No.
Do you know where they connect?
I didn't know the size, we got outside, it was too tall, we didn't want...
Uh, Steve, when, when, uh, when the televising was done earlier this week, how many pipes were coming into that?
We found one pipe coming in from the east.
Okay. Oh, no, no, what, what are you talking about, in the ball pit?
No, not the ball pit.
Not the ball pit, that's...
What we found coming into that pipe?
Pretty far out there.
Yeah, where we were at, four hundred ninety-five feet, we found one pipe coming in from the east. Yep. It's all a video, Joe's got it on video.
So you found a pipe coming in from the east?
Yep.
And it was open?
No, blocked.
With dirt or what?
Nah.
Are you aware of anything with that, Roger?
No, we've explored out there before, but I've never seen a pipe from the east coming in. Doesn't mean there isn't one there.
What pipe was blocked? I don't get what you mean, coming in from the east, coming into...
One coming in, where we were looking, getting running the game, we ran it up to about four hundred ninety-five feet. We found a pipe coming in from the east.
Coming into the thirty-six from the east?
Yep, yep. You know, I, that's all I know, you know, the word goes. You know, it'd be nice to explore, do a little bit more exploratory, know what we got, so that could give an honest fair representation what needs to be done. Is that a lot to ask or not?
The, the thirty-six was wide open though, wasn't it?
Yep.
That's what, we dug it up before, probably eight years ago, and it was wide open.
But the problem with that system is on the south end, not on the north end. Water flows downhill.
If water flows downhill, there was no problem on Mary Holland's site, why, why would you go downhill farther?
One of the pipes is stagnated.
One of the thirty-twos?
Yep, the east side is stagnated. It was stagnated, we're up in Harrison Township, and it was stagnated down in that box. That's what gave us, that's what I did, why I determined we need to go south to find the problem.
But thirty-six is open in there.
Yeah, but one of the two thirty-twos is not flowing.
Well, that doesn't mean it's still on our side, but the problem's north of there.
I...
The problem there is, the problem is between the Greenwood box and the thirty-six. Where that two pipe run, the problem is in there.
But only one rules across the road, right?
No, matters is two. I've looked at six or seven maps from you guys that you approved, and every one is different. Why is that?
I guess this goes...
You paid forty dollars for a map, and it's wrong, and you guys approved it.
This goes back to a lot of conversations that have been had previously on the accuracy of the maps in this area. We had a plan in place to have televising done on this system, have McClure involved, have documentation for this section of the tile that seems to have questions regularly about it, and that plan was changed. Um, I've been in contact with, um, Dan Weidmeyer, we talked a little bit previously. We're not able to finish our conversation because some other stuff came up, but, um, I guess I would go back to our original plan. I think this should be televised. I am more than willing to handle it, but, um, we gotta have a little change of approach here from what we're doing right now, in my opinion.
If you gave you two more hours, I would, uh, problem.
I think the only way to answer the questions on a long-term, ongoing basis is to have televising and, in both lines, overseen by the district.
Does that need to be done by a repair request?
Yes, you have to, yeah. They have a different request.
That's why, yeah.
Then I think there should be any repair requests done for televising that.
Okay, I can write that up here after the meeting. That's good with the board?
You're suggesting televise that whole system there?
At least, at least between the box and, um, the ditch.
Yep.
The Greenwood box.
The one in, um...
Tim Goshen.
Tim Goshen, yes. That's what I had said originally.
Well, then we, we'd have answers. I mean, it'd be clear.
Who are you referring to as the ditch?
Drain for lot eleven, open ditch.
The one in Antones.
Yeah.
But the question is, is where are the two thirty-twos go? Were they going to the road out of, uh, Tim Goshen's?
That's, that's what televising would answer, you'd be, we'd be able to track it, have location to...
Have an engineer and cameras to do that, and somebody...
Well, there's, there's accusations that are regular...
Actually come together to a thirty-six, which is very likely what it is, although it's a thirty-two that disappeared.
There's accusations that regularly happen about the accuracy of our maps, which just occurred again in the last couple minutes, and I, I don't know how we're expected to address the accuracy of that without having, um, the ones who drew the maps involved. I mean, are...
We've never found this thirty-six.
Oh.
Or thirty-two, I mean.
Uh, yeah, it's just...
Which one you never found?
On the east, we've never dug it up.
What's in there? That, that's what we got on our...
Is that what you got on yours?
Yep. There's a, we need, there's a, there's a line going in there, it's pretty diagoned, close to where McClure has always put that way they find the map. And McClure has engineering reports saying that the invent drainage ditch serves three thousand acres. It's a, there's a nineteen eighty report.
That thirty-two does that many acres?
No, the only way you get that ditch, to serve the invent ditch, to service three thousand acres, a relief has to be there, 'cause there's no other way you can do that.
So on one hand, the maps are right, on the other, they're not. I think we need to have concrete facts of what we're dealing with so we can get things corrected and, on the map, and know what we're actually dealing with here. This is, conversation has gone on way too long without facts being involved.
Well, we had forced outlets there that were under mud for too many years.
Yeah.
That didn't help it any, Joe, in Antones.
Well, I, I'm not talking about the dredge.
And that's why it was cleaned out.
Yeah, that's why it was cleaned out, but that doesn't mean that that didn't back up and plug those other tiles up ten years ago.
You don't get that kind of concrete coming in there to plug tile. That's what looks like me.
It was laying pretty flat, all that.
Well, the design is laying flat, it's what, point zero five percent.
When you got the outlet plugged in a, in a flat tile, you're gonna have mud filled up in the tile.
Well, that tile was pretty clean from what we could see.
Probably because of all the pressure on it.
And we're in good condition.
Well, is, is the board comfortable with saying that, and, and would there be a motion to the fact that request number seventy-eight is completed, and we will address further things with a new repair request at next week's meeting? Is that...
Well, I think you do it in two separate motions, and I would say seventy-eight is complete, uh...
Yeah, you'd make a motion, okay? We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion to the motion at hand? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous, um...
Jay, you got any information on that other tile at all?
I don't, I always thought this one went across the road, but maybe not. It's dry, you can see it.
I'm familiar with the one from the west and the, and the outlet, but the one that they're talking about, I've never seen that dug up. You haven't?
No. I mean, I, I thought this one went across the road, and ours, we just dug in one that comes over the thirty-six. Oh, there, I remember seeing them, and they explored their last hole and found anything.
Yeah, I, I know before we filled the ditch, and Wrightsill's dug all the way around there.
Right.
So, they dug deeper than, deeper than the bottom of the ditch.
Normally do that, it was, they're gonna affect more of us. And we got five and a half inches rain this spring, and nothing ever showed up there, even had a washout or something.
Yeah.
So, if there's something out there, it's something that owns us, so...
I'm, I'm lost with you, I don't know if that it ever existed.
I don't, I don't know that we need any other motions, but I can fill out a request after the meeting, and we can handle that next week if that's good with everyone. You good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know what else you can do, but I'm afraid you're looking for famine.
Well, we'll at least know what we have when we have concrete evidence. Um, thank you guys for coming in. Um, next is discussion with our auditor.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next week we have a busy week. We have three public hearings, one for a class B road, one for a class C road, and one, uh, public hearing for the pipeline ordinance. So we're gonna have our second tier campus for the election at one o'clock in the afternoon, so it will be a longer day for you guys next Tuesday. Um, and then I received an email. And I'm gonna just pass it down, um, I'm not sure, I can't remember if I forwarded it on to you guys or not, it's from Outer Bridge, um, wanting to know if you wanted them to come here to present their annual report, or if you wanted them to, um, send it to you via email, and then I can just respond either way, so we'll just pass this down, you guys can look at it and just tell me what you want me to do with that. And then that's all I have.
I think in person would be good, like everyone else, anyone have any thoughts?
I'd like to see it in person.
Rod, you any preference? Don't matter.
Doesn't matter. She comes up here.
Yeah, yeah, I would say keep it consistent.
Okay, I'll tell her to come in person then. And then that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, board discussion committee reports, Jack?
Yeah, we had, we chatted a bit, especially the meeting yesterday.
Okay, we got, can you, you guys, we have, uh, board discussion going on here.
It was to, uh, go over the community plan for the, to, to certify for, for five years, and we went over that yesterday. And, uh, they had, uh, reports from the, um, the, uh, other people that get money from us, they were there to report after our meeting, so we approved the community plan and the certification. And, uh, another meeting there on the twenty-seventh, November, uh, regular.
Okay, thank you. Carter, you have anything?
I'll be.
Josh?
I don't have any meetings.
Roger?
I had an ID to the Iowa Drainage District Association meeting. Um, some of the things we talked about was Senate File Four, Four Eight Two, which would be alleviating the drainage districts from posting in every newspaper in the county, and sending letters to all the property owners would be sufficient, and not having to post it in newspapers, 'cause everybody in the drainage district gets a letter already. So there's kind of, uh, it costs the districts a lot of money.
Duplication.
It's all duplication, and we're gonna try to get that fast. Um, that's probably the biggest thing. The other thing is railroads, is we're still fighting with the railroads to pay their drainage assessments and fixing, and they're still making it miserable for everybody to do a repair. They want notice about a month ahead of time, and they want flaggers, and they want insurance, and they want, we're trying to get that down to a more workable procedure.
That's good.
Um, that was really the highlights of it, and school for the drainage clerks, we're thinking about doing it at least twice a year, and, including everybody, not just members. So if you're affiliated in membership or not, you could come to the drainage meetings, drainage clerks to learn.
For all counties.
For all counties, I don't know, I'm in favor of that, because I think they all learn something.
Need the education, yeah.
Yep, so that was the highlights.
Um, I had the Rural Action Caucus Symposium here this last week, and I brought a sample of this Detera drug deactivation system. One of the presentations, or one of the topics of conversation, it's all over our long session, was, um, on opioid crisis and stuff, and this was one of the companies that was there. Um, I don't have a specific price for this, but there was a lot of examples of how this could be used, and I texted Tammy to ask how much our, um, funding was for the opioid settlement so far and stuff, but I think this is a very, um, viable option, and something that we can use those funds for in addressing community impacts that way. Basically, what you do with it is you open it up, um, tear o, I mean, it's three, three step instructions here, tear open pouch, place unused medications inside, fill pouch halfway with warm water and wait thirty seconds, seal pouch tightly, and gently shake, and then dispose in your normal trash. So it, it makes it a lot more convenient for people to get rid of either old unused pills that could be used for unintended purposes by another individual, or whatever the situation may be, but rather than like drug takeback days or whatever, where people could have to drive for a certain distance or time, um, this would be something that could be brought to them directly. One example was, um, distributing it with Meals on Wheels. Um, so there was a lot of, a lot of good information and stuff that was presented there. Any, anything else? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Right, to adjourn, and if I did just point something out real quick for your benefit, I went downstairs, did some research. Um, officers in a, uh, the board supervisors, much like any other, um, type of corporation, are appointed by the sitting board, uh, supervisors, directors, whoever it is encompassing, and officers can be removed by a majority of the board appointing them. Election, elected officers, like our president, have to be moved, removed according to the law. So by majority, unless you have rules of procedure that's at a height of vote, so, just so you're aware.
Okay, thank you for that.
Whether you should have or not, that's not my opinion, but...
Technically, I just wanna get on with the good...
I just wanted to clarify what I said earlier, because I don't know... I just wanted to clarify what I said earlier because I don't know that it was a highway clerk.
Anything further? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. We got a motion by Roger, second by Josh. Okay? Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. We are adjourned at ten-ten.
Thanks, Don.
Would anyone like to look at this deck stairs? Yeah, are you, are you ready for the canvas stuff? Okay. Next, we have our canvas. The agenda was published for ten, so we are after that and in compliance. I would call the meeting to order and ask for everyone to stand to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up here is approval of the agenda for this canvassing of votes. Would entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next up is to review the abstract of votes. Tammy, who am I?
So, it says, "We, the undersigned members of the Cassis Board of Canvassers, hereby certify the following to be true and correct abstract of the votes cast in this county at the twenty-twenty-three city school election held on Tuesday, November seventh, twenty-twenty-three, as shown by the tally list returned from the several election precincts." And I'll just read through them if that's okay. City of Algonah Mayor Rick Murphy received three hundred and ninety-two votes, scattering eleven votes, total four hundred and three votes. City of Algonah City Council at Large Kathy Gerish received three hundred and ninety-two votes, scattering F-six votes for a total of three hundred and ninety-eight votes. City of Algonah City Council Ward Two Jessica Gronow, so I don't know how to say that. Hundred and thirty-five votes, scattering one vote for a total of a hundred and thirty-six votes. City of Algonah City Council Ward Four Harley Colehouse, sixty-six votes, scattering two votes for a total of sixty-eight votes. City of Algonah City Ward Three to fill a vacancy, Donald Craig Johnson, ninety votes, scattering zero, a total of ninety votes. City of Bancroft Mayor Thomas Johnson, seventy-six votes, scattering four votes for a total of eighty votes. City of Bancroft City Council at Large Jeffrey A. Theeson, seventy-six votes, scattering twenty-one votes. Jeremy Stover, twenty-five votes, a total of a hundred and twenty-two votes. Um, Jeffrey Theeson is duly elected for the City of Bancroft at Large for four years and Jeremy Stover, City of Bancroft Council at Large for four years. City of Burt City Council at Large Vicki Briggs, twenty-eight votes, Kenny O'Leary, eighty-three votes. Robin Van, Robin Ann Van Lanningham, twenty-three votes. Joseph Hayes, seventy-four votes. County Cato, forty-seven votes. Harold Lovren's, twelve votes. Mary Melick, twenty-nine votes. Randy Wood, hundred and nineteen votes. Christopher Michael Hayes, twenty-seven votes, a scattering of two for a total of four hundred and forty-four votes. Kenny O'Leary, Joseph Hayes, and Randy Wood duly elected for the office of City Burt City Council at Large for the term of four years. City of Fenton Mayor Gene Miller, seventy-two votes, scattering three votes for a total of seventy-five votes. City of Fenton City Council at Large Tim Peterson, fifteen votes. Sandy Del Rosso, nine votes. Jeffrey Claylau, thirteen votes. Alex Suave, thirty-eight votes. Bronda Cash, twenty-three votes. Ryan Harms, fifty-three votes, scattering zero for a total of a hundred and fifty-one votes. Alex Suave and Ryan Harms were duly elected for the office of City of Fenton City Council at Large for the term of four years. City of Lakota Mayor Nathan Heidecker, forty-nine votes, scattering five votes for a total of fifty-four votes. City of Lakota City Council at Large Royce Jansen, thirty-six votes. Rick Meyer, forty-four votes. Chance Sarr, twenty-one votes, scattering two votes, the total of a hundred and three votes. Royce Jansen and Rick Meyer are elected for the City of Lakota City Council at Large for the term of four years. City of Lead Yard City Council at Large, scattering eight votes. Robert Gilbertson, nineteen votes. James Steenhardt, eighteen votes. Martha Simon, eight votes for a total of fifty-three votes. Robert Gilbertson, James Steenhardt, and Martha Simon are elected for the office of City of Lead Yard City Council at Large for the term of four years. City of Lead Yard City Council at Large to fill a vacancy, Royce Falvik, twenty-four votes, scattering zero, total twenty-four votes. City of Lone Rock Mayor, scattering four votes. Letty Hendrickson, twenty-four votes. Gerald Thompson, nineteen votes for a total of forty-seven votes. Letty Hendrickson is elected for the City of Lone Rock Mayor for the term of two years. City of Lone Rock City Council at Large Shannon Ducey, twenty-seven votes. Dennis Wilburg, thirty-six votes. Jason Brace, forty votes. Jerry Nierum, thirty-seven votes, scattering of eight votes for a total of hundred, a hundred and forty-eight votes. Dennis Wilburg, Jason Brace, and Jerry Nerman, Jer, Nierum are elected to the office of the City of Lone Rock City Council at Large for the term of four years. City of Laverne Mayor Kevin McPeak, thirty-two votes, scattering of two votes for a total of thirty-four votes. City of Laverne City Council at Large Dennis Carroll, thirty votes. Kelsey Casey, thirty-three votes. Scott Frieders, thirty-three votes, scattering two votes for a total of ninety-eight votes. Dennis Carroll, Kelsey Casey, and Scott Frieders are elected to the office of City of Laverne City Council at Large for the term of four years. City of Sway City City Council at Large Lupi Colash, seventy-five votes. Shelley Girdes, seventy-two votes. Mark Girdes, seventy-three votes. Dustin Sobelock, eighty-three votes. Andy Donnelly, fifty-three votes. Zachary Long, thirteen votes. And three scattering votes for a total of three hundred and seventy-two votes. Lupi Colash, Mark Girdes, and Dustin Sobelik are elected to the office of the City of Sway City City Council at Large for the term of four years. City of Titanca Mayor David Levu, fifty-three votes, scattering two votes for a total of fifty-five votes. City of Titanca City Council at Large Sarah Hamilton, fifty votes. Michael Frederickson, fifty-one votes, scattering four votes. Urban Harms, twenty-six votes. Nick Harms, thirteen votes for a total of a hundred and forty-four votes. Sarah Hamilton, Michael Frederickson, and Urban Harms are elected for the office of City I, of Titanca City Council at Large for the term of four years. City of Wesley Mayor Craig Larson, ninety votes, scattering ten votes for a total of a hundred votes. City of Wesley City Council at Large Joella Leider, fifty-three votes. David Redding, eighty-seven votes. Teresa Earls, fifty-nine votes. Philip Ricky, sixty-eight votes and a scattering of four votes for a total of two hundred and seventy-one votes. David Redding, Teresa Earls, and Philip Ricky are elected for the city, the office of City of Wesley City Council at Large for the term of four years. City of West Bend Mayor Kimberly Johnson, two votes, scattering two votes, total of four votes. City of West Bend City Council at Large Brooke Winklehurst, four votes. Linda Tilges, three votes. Joseph Montague, three votes, scattering of one vote for a total of eleven votes. City of Whittamore City Council at Large Rodney Johnson, thirty-four votes. Tim Schneider, thirty-six votes. Rebecca Lancaster, thirty-two votes for scattering and a scattering of one vote for a total of a hundred and three. Rodney Johnson, Tim Schneider, and Rebecca Lancaster elected to the office of the City of Whittamere City Council at Large for the term of four years. Algonah School Director at Large Andrea Vintsey, six hundred and forty-two votes. Brent Owens, seven hundred and thirty-seven votes. Todd Luachi, six hundred and seventy-five votes, and Todd Nugent, six hundred and forty-nine votes, for a scattering of sixteen votes. A total of two thousand seven hundred and nineteen votes. North Iowa School Director District One Shandor Griffey, eight votes. Courtney Bachleman, twenty-five. Robin Catwick, forty-two and a scattering of zero with a total of seventy-five votes. North Iowa School Director District Two Cody Wurches, a sixty-eight votes, scattering one, total of sixty-nine votes. North Iowa School Director District Four Alicia, Alicia Brass, sixty-six, scattering one for a total of sixty-seven. North Iowa Director District Five Matt Du- Duvee? Sixty-three votes, scattering two votes, a total of sixty-five votes. North Cassus School Director at Large Christopher Hurt, two hundred and thirty-seven votes, scattering five for a total of two hundred and forty-two. North Cassus School District One Justin Dean, two hundred and forty-five votes, scattering seven. Dustin Goraskowski, eight votes for a total of two hundred and sixty votes. Justin Dean and Dustin Goraskowski are elected for the office of North Cassus School Dis- School Director District One for the term of four years. North Cassus Director District Two Autumn Mur- Murfue, two hundred and twenty-nine votes, scattering of three votes for a total of two hundred and thirty-two votes. North Cassus School Director District Two to fill a vacancy, scattering twenty-five votes. Dustin Goraskowski, seven votes for a total of thirty-two votes. Dustin Goraskowski is duly elected for the office of North Cassus School Director District Two to fill a vacancy for the term of two years. North Union School Director at Large Jason Prigandi, a hundred and ten votes, scattering two votes for a total of a hundred and twelve votes. North Union School Director District Three Travis Nielsen, a hundred and sixteen votes, scattering one vote for a total of a hundred and seventeen votes. Twin River School Director at Large Caitlin Stalzer, zero votes. Ashley Fols, zero votes. Megan Morkey, zero votes. Emily Jensen, zero votes. Scattering zero votes, total of zero votes. West Bend Mallard School Director at Large David Ch- or Dawn Schmidt, eight votes. Gillian Hansen, nine votes. Sorry, Dawn Schmidt, eight votes. Gillian Hansen, nine votes. Nicole Meyer, ten votes. John Zog, eight votes and a scattering of three votes for a total of thirty-eight votes. Iowa Central Community College Director District Five Andrea Oswald, zero votes, scattering zero votes for a total of zero votes. Iowa Lakes Community College Director District One Arden N. Kanander, six hundred and forty-one votes, scattering four votes for a total of six hundred and forty-five votes. North Iowa Area Community School Director District Eight Deborah Hill, eighty-five votes, scattering zero votes for a total of eighty-five. That is all of the canvas.
Well, thank you for reading that. Seven, eight, nine, ten votes.
Yeah.
Okay. Our next, our item on the, uh, next item on the agenda now that we have reviewed the abstract of votes is to approve the abstract of votes. I would entertain a motion to that effect. Roger, do we have a second?
All second.
Josh, thank you. Um, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Do you wanna sign the, uh, the stuff now or wait till after the, we're done?
Anyone have any preference? You wanna do it now or after we get through the claims? Does everyone look at the claims here or if anyone want to?
Fifteen something.
Fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars and seventeen cents.
And the cities and schools reimburse us for most of that.
Yep. Um, so, if anyone has any questions, otherwise I would entertain a motion to approve the election claims. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the election claims. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Do we want to stay in session or sign them or adjourn?
Okay, so this is the first set. So, after you get to North Iowa Area Community College Director District Eight, Jack, stop. Okay, and then we'll go to the second set.
Do you have them separated in there?
Well, that's the first set. I want to get this one though, but just in case.
One at a time?
Feel like I'm back in school.
Tammy, you know how many pages it is per set?
Nope.
Hello?
Figured you'd have that memorized.
Nope.
I have to go have a second surgery done for carpal thumb.
Oh, really?
I'm gonna need to follow you there. I'm gonna need to follow you there. There you got it.
Insurance change another key.
Or do you want to step?
When you get, you're not there yet.
We, we still got a few. I think we'll let them get all the way to the end so we make sure we separate them. And everyone can have a two-second break for their hand too.
I could use a break.
Yeah, you'll get a follow-up with all of them.
You're not even that done yet.
We're close.
No, we still have this one.
Yeah, but this one's almost done.
Yeah, but we're not halfway done signing.
Oh, no, we're not.
See what happens when your glove leaks?
No, what happened is that acid?
And hydrous.
Oh. Gotcha.
One little hole in the glove.
Yeah.
Gotta be careful with that.
That's not a good deal.
So gloves are more important than you think.
Yeah, you're right there.
Personal protective equipment for a reason.
You spread, you spread your own, huh?
This is a phantom tile that we've never found.
Never found, but it's on a map.
Yes.
And it gets everybody all confused.
Yes.
A hundred-year-old man.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and it, we dug out there, we've never found it.
Well, when there's two in the box, I mean.
There's, there's a tile that comes in here into the box. And this one comes in. According to this is below the box and when we cleaned that, we didn't find a thing. You'd think you'd find a thirty-inch tile.
In the north half of Cassus County if it's been operating in the last ten years you would find.
Gonna take a break.
Yeah, that's fine. Five, ten-minute break-ish, whatever. I could use some, I could use some more water tubes.
Good morning. So you think I should resign to, is that your opinion?
No.
You're sure?
I'm pretty sure.
That's up to you.
That's up to you. It might be a, a year or so off.
Didn't even pay any attention to that.
Leftover from the last.
Okay, I saw that.
Where is he gonna be drilling that out?
Huh? It's gonna come out in my office. I don't know which one it is, it's six of them.
I'd say that's a heck of a drill.
He's, he's gonna come right to a pie laster. So it's got a eighteen-inch by eighteen-inch pie laster and then the floor.
What's it for?
The controls, it doesn't work.
Okay.
Bob, whatever you wanna call it.
Oh, the security.
It was the last one you tried.
Nope.
No, he had one last ago.
Thank you.
But technically it was the last one you tried because it worked.
Well, yeah.
It's a good thing we got on-demand comedian.
I think it was Jeff Foxworthy that did a bit on that that. When you're looking for something around the house, it's always the last place you look.
Cause that's where you find it.
That's where you find it, don't look anymore. So he said, uh, his wife yelled and said he, you found it, yeah, but I'm still looking for it. It's in the last place I look. That was the foundation of my exposure to comedians is Jeff Foxworthy on cassette tape. Believe the tape was called Games Right Next Play.
And how many years ago was that then?
Probably twenty.
Uh, tapes were probably still being used often enough back then.
Show these, show. Kids these days that, uh, the cassette tape adapter for hooking up your. MP3 player, compact disc player, they have no idea what it is. The cassette and you have the cable that sticks out the thing. I'm gonna take a nap after this. Sleep is in short supply in our house right now.
Bet it probably is.
How's the little one doing? She is great actually. Very healthy.
Very smart. Important part.
Yeah.
She's smart.
She's smart, she's, she's already learned.
Takes after her dad.
Yeah. She's learned how to get her passy back in her mouth.
Isn't that pretty quick?
Yeah. That was pretty crazy to see minutes after she was born, she was just wide awake alert cooing, looking around. I don't know, she could see the bloods, but.
Hit the ground running?
Yeah.
No, that's good.
So far she only, you know, wakes us up once or twice a night.
With not that every five minutes, you're missing out. I've heard that if you have an easy baby, you pay for it later on in life.
Well, so we already had a difficult one with Lucas, so. I think we kind of paid for it already and now we're getting.
Prepaid. Yeah, prepaid, yeah.
So I think up until the age of five. So just a year ago, we were so struggling to get him to sleep through the night consistently for more than two or three days. We'd get a couple of days where he'd sleep through the night.
You were still prepaying?
Yep. But now he sleeps through his sister screaming, so.
Yeah, that's right.
Took her to the hospital yesterday for her checkup. She was given the full clean bill.
I don't know if she's.
Are you wanna go get it? You guys finished up?
I don't know if she's lost or what. We told the guy it would be done in half an hour, but fifteen minutes of that.
So Roger, are you gonna be moving over to where Carter is? Okay, so I don't have to move then?
No, you're good.
No.
Yeah, you're fine.
Anybody need any surgical masks?
I will pass on that.
Oh, you still got a few in there.
I have that's over.
Is it though?
They've.
That's over.
Sure. I think some people would disagree with that.
Everybody know where she's at?
Okay.
Let's just start signing up, she already read through them, I don't know, I mean.
Did you read them too?
It's just the second copy of them. I don't know, anyone have any?
Well, she's, she's gotta file or just start signing.
Yeah, I know it's just a duplicate copy, so I don't. I don't know that she has to take minutes on us signing them.
She does, we can tell her we started signing at ten forty-seven.
Watch the videos.
Roger, I think your pen died.
You switch, you switch to black ink and I switch to blue ink.
Have you started that one?
Yep.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry.
We figured it wasn't, I didn't think you needed to take minutes on us signing.
No.
We didn't get too far down the list.
I think you got pretty far.
Maybe the moral support will help us sign faster.
Alright.
You didn't have anything, even close, did you?
Um, yes, one vote in Sway City.
What was?
A brother and sister.
Oh, yeah.
I wondered if that was a husband-wife.
No, brother-sister.
Okay. I saw that.
So you have one made it, one did not, because it was a vote for three, and they...
That's gonna be an awkward Christmas.
Had a third, and I think they get along fine. So I don't think it'll be an issue.
We signed the wrong line here.
Kyle, you were supposed to sign up on the chair. On that one.
This should be chair first, huh?
Yeah, here.
I'll fix that one quick.
Do you need light out?
Yeah, probably. Yeah, just hold on, thank you.
So you keep that away.
There we go. Forget.
Just the top one.
Oh, okay. I saw the whole stack and I was a little nervous.
Just the top one?
Does this need to be stamped with date?
No.
Why would Webster County get a copy?
Oh, Saragordo's stuck under this one.
Um, because, um, community college districts would like...
Oh, okay.
Have some.
I don't know, these have to be in order.
That's the last one?
Except for you, Kyle.
Okay, thanks. Alright, well, is there anything else, otherwise we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
We have a motion by Josh, do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, thanks for any discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned at ten fifty-six.
I think Sam approved all that.
Yeah.
Yeah.